Hello everyone, my name is Oliver James and I am honoured to be on Fit and Well to do some breath and breathing techniques with you. So, I wrote a book, 21 Breath. These, these behind me, situationally placed. Anyway, so I wrote a book, 21 Breath, and it's 21 breathing techniques that we can use every day to help ourselves with blood pressure, digestion, getting to sleep, having a better orgasm, things like that. Anyway, listen, there's a lot that we can do with breath. And Fit and Well asked me, could I come on and do a session with you? Now, I know normally these are done live, so apologies, my schedule's a little bit mad at the moment. But I really wanted to have some good music on, and it's a little bit hard to do that when we are live. So, please do leave messages, send some comments. You can visit my profile, that's @OlliesWorldofBreath, and ask me any questions that you have. I'm very happy to answer them. So, a little bit about breath before we begin. I'm a body-led psychotherapist, so I use breath and breathing techniques, both in terms of connecting with our emotions and our physical health, but at the same time, to balance all of the systems in our body. There isn't a medication in the world that impacts our body like breath does. Every system from cardiovascular, lymphatic, digestion, everything benefits from the way that we breathe. And unfortunately, most of us don't breathe very well. So, today is an opportunity for you to undo some of those negative habits, to develop your fitness. Yes, breath can help you do that, even if you sit down on a sofa, developing your body's capacity to handle and clear the toxin carbon dioxide and get in, oxygenate all the cells with oxygen. Wonderful things can be done. So, we're going to start with that. We're going to open up our whole respiratory system, then you'll see, I'm very interested in releasing tension from the body. I don't know anyone at the moment that isn't holding a little bit of tension. So, very un-British-like, we're going to do a little bit of a tension release, letting all the muscles in the body relax. You see what I'm doing here? Already getting into it's a bit of a shake, clearing all the, that kind of tension that we hold. So, you are very welcome to. Now, from a body-led psychotherapy, you'll be noticing, I've done a few courses with people up in Scotland and different parts of the world, and we kind of have this freezing ability. You watch someone like myself on here and it's like, well, you can watch me do it, but well, I don't know if I want to try it. Give it a go. Even if it's a little bit hard, always look after yourself, just go to your level. If it feels uncomfortable, just breathe, slow yourself down, rewind, pause, play it again. If there's anything I do that feels too difficult, then just let your own natural breath come in. Stay out of that flight and flight, fight and flight response. So, without further ado, let us begin. Alright, so the first thing we're going to do is something called calibrating, recalibrating your body with breath. So, hands on your lower belly, inhale down. Strong exhale. Letting that breath come down. See if you can keep up with me. Three. Two. What we're doing is clearing out all the carbon dioxide. If you get lightheaded, slow down. This one, hold the breath out. Exhale, 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 hold it out. Now, you just hold for as long as you're able. We're going to keep going for three, two, one. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Deep inhale. Another exhale, out. Keep going, keep going, go, and go. Squeeze all the air out. There's a little more, squeeze it out. Hold. We're going to hold a little longer. If you need to breathe, do releasing the neck, the face muscles. We're going to exhale in three, two, one. Inhale, sorry. Natural breathing, so just let your body move. So, we're going to do another round of this. So, I really invite you to release the neck. The shoulders, the arms, gentle shoulder circles. So, if you're feeling lightheaded, that's kind of natural, that is your body responding to all of that carbon dioxide, getting it out. Our body is interested in carbon dioxide, not oxygen. Round two. Inhale. Noticing if you can let that breath come deeper, deeper. Exhale. Through the mouth, in through the nose. Exhale. Squeeze it all out, every single bit. You'll notice each time you can get a little bit more air out. We want those belly muscles to be working, give yourself a bit of a six-pack. Last one. Exhale. Deep inhale. Exhale to hold. Hold, 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 hold. Hold it out. Keeping it out, close your eyes, rest. We're resting all the muscles. If you need to breathe, just breathe, come back to natural breathing. Otherwise, we're going to inhale in three, two, one. Exhale. Last one. Exhale. Inhale. Inhale, hold. So, just pausing, find your inhale, hold. Again, in this, you'll last probably a little bit longer for this one. Now, I'm just going to keep going. I'd like for you to hold your breath as long as you're able. Two seconds, three seconds, 30 seconds, whatever's there for you. But wherever you are, relaxing face muscles, neck, shoulders. And silence. I don't know if you can hear the birds, it isn't that silent where I am. I'm in New Forest in Hampshire. Let us give just a little bit of time. So, those that are still holding, don't let me rush you. For those that return to natural breathing, move, let yourself shuffle a little bit. Okay, so the next exercise is, if you're still holding, keep holding, is tension release. So, I'm going to stand up and I invite you to do the same. You're going to stand yourself, we're going to release the lower body, and then up to the upper body. And it's about, it's kind of a dancey song. And what I recommend doing is rather than dancing, you can dance if you wish, that's fine, but it's like, think of it as a conscious movement, like, oh, where am I holding tension, finding it, shaking it, you can shake it very gently. Some people feel quite self-conscious doing this. I love it, and if you come to one of my groups, they're online, and also in Southbourne, in Bournemouth, you'll see mixtures of people looking after themselves, sort of just moving a little bit, some people going wild, whatever it is they want to do. We're all different people, so look after yourself for this exercise. Okay? I'm assuming everyone's returned. If you haven't, then you are incredible, clearly a breathing athlete. So, let us stand. Just going to sort out my camera. Okay. Right, so you can't see my feet, but I've got them about hip width apart, and what we're going to do is bounce. See if you can let your breath drop down. Exhale, now the exhale is relaxed, unlike the previous exercise. So, now you find your own breath, don't let me control it for you. You can close your eyes. Okay, so with your eyes closed, I know you haven't got them closed, you're like, who's this widow? Okay, so whichever culture you're from, some of us really move very nicely, others, I'm from the UK, we don't like to move so much. So, if it's too much for you, gentle, if you can go a little bit more, stronger in the legs. And now you'll notice I'm letting my head go, so I invite you to do the same, letting the head sort of lull on the shoulders. If you get any aches and pains, you can use your hands to massage it. So, we're not looking to be perfect human beings, we're just like, ooh, where am I today? How am I feeling? If I feel that ache and pain going there, rubbing it, doing this breath, we're going to really oxygenate ourselves, so the more that we can move, we'll get that blood supply clear out, that toxic carbon dioxide, we need it by the way. We don't want to get rid of it completely. Okay, lower legs. Now, as you do the lower leg, if you can, you sort of come down, shaking the leg, and up. And we breathe it. Letting the whole upper body, beautiful, last one on this leg. Swapping sides. So, if you thought breath was just sitting on a mountain in Tibet and breathing, those meditative breaths will come into that in the end, but we really want to clear that tension. Knees, you can bring the knees forwards, bringing them back, and you'll notice as you work the knees, it comes into the hips. You can sort of move around your room a little bit, and as I said, look, I recognize it looks like I'm dancing, but I'm more like tuning in, noticing, ooh, where is my tension? You can do the same. I love doing this. I'm so sorry we're not doing this live. Having a little disco, okay. Arms and shoulders. Swapping legs. So, this is stuff you can do every day, particularly if you do a lot of sitting, as I do, I do quite a lot of writing. Do it in the morning, even do it before bed, particularly if you've had a stressful day. Last two. Last one. Okay, back into the bouncing. Let yourself bounce a little more, you can close your eyes. And so, at this time, I'm not going to direct you, I'll be quiet. Use the bouncing just to find any more areas that need release. Okay, and then slow down. Stay standing, just grounding into your feet. Grounding into your feet. Take this opportunity to feel. I'm always interested in sensations. What do I notice, particularly if we do the shaking and the breathing in this way? We can feel a lot, so I feel very hot suddenly. Also feel some humming, and it's interesting for me today, it's in the underside of the forearm, a little bit in the fingers. It's like, where do you feel the aliveness in you today? Okay. So, you are welcome to that aliveness. Alright, so we're going to take a deep breath in, let the arms reach out wide, and exhale, and let them fall. I'll do it sideways, so you can see you rotate the fingers. A little bit of a heart lift, work the legs and the butt, exhale. Last one. And then let us come to seated. So, let's talk about being seated. So, you'll see this a lot in meditation and breath work. Oh, I changed my camera. So, the problem with being seated is particularly if you are tight, then it is pretty uncomfortable. So, if you notice your knees are like, like this, you have two options. So, one is grab pillows, prop it up so your knees can just rest a little bit. Your other option is to sit on something. So, I like pillows, the hips, the more the hip can be up and the knees can be down, you release all these front hip muscles basically, and in that way, the lower back isn't like, by this crushing effect. So, sort yourself out for that, find, you can even sit in a chair if you need it. And the last case scenario, if your body is just under such tension, lie down. Next exercise is a belly pumping exercise. So, what this looks like, I'll just show you it first. So, we're going to inhale. Now, keeping the breath in, then my lower belly muscles pull in and release, pull in, release, and I recognize what I'm wearing, barely shows anything. I'll show you, I'll take the top up a little bit in a minute. Now, we just pump, and then exhale. Now, you're going to get hot doing this. This is amazing for digestion, this is amazing if you're feeling a little sluggish on a day, if you want to wake up, if you can't make it to the beach and you just need to get that sun inside of you, charge up all the body with oxygen and that life-giving warmth that we can give ourselves. This is the exercise for you. Not only that, it boosts your fitness quite a lot. So, okay, so we're going to inhale. Give it a go, practice, and then exhale, no, don't exhale, just pump, belly in, release, belly in, release, belly in, release. Now, to begin with, you can go slowly, it's like draw it in and release, draw it in, release. Obviously, I'm exhaling because I'm speaking, but you keep your breath in as and when you need, you just come back into your breathing. So, we'll do one more practice, and then I'll put some music on, and you find your own pace with it. Inhale, keeping the breath in, pump, pump, let go, pump, let go. Now, there's a real, look, I'm hesitant to call it an art, but what I mean by there's an art to it, is that you can hold and keep holding and hold, and that's just too much tension, but there's a sort of drawing in, like you're sort of pulling your belly up off a belt, and then relax, pull it in, relax. And what we're doing is our belly is used to breathing in when it relaxes, and we're sort of separating the two, and so you're going to be really developing your neuromuscular kind of complex of muscles that go on. And in that way, learning to take charge of your nervous system, learning to take charge of all the systems in your body. So, then, if you can, faster and faster, and you go as fast as you can, the beat for this is quite fast, so enjoy it. If you need to rest, then do. If you notice tension coming in, particularly in the shoulders, I'll prompt halfway through the exercise, releasing. If you sort of move a little bit as you do it, it's all good, movement is good. Okay? Enjoy. Alright, so you do not need to copy my breathing, I'll be pumping a little bit different to you in terms of time, so it's really for you to find your own pace. Deep breath in to begin. Exhale. Inhale, and we begin. Pump. You can go slower. Only when you need, exhale, start again. Now, it's quite nice to just let the body move, particularly if you are a tension-holding person. Now, the shoulders, not this. Let the shoulders release, lower belly. Now, if you need to rest, now's the time to rest. You can let the shoulders go, twisting. It's like, ooh, what do I notice? We're going to go again. Inhale, exhale. Inhale, begin. Remember, you can go slowly, you can go really slowly if you want to sort of enjoy the heat of it, otherwise. If you can, keep going. Letting face relax, shoulders, neck, fingers. I like to move my head from side to side, I'm interested if I'm like, if all the muscles are very connected, it's like, ooh, can I just separate this? Now, if you, you'll find this out for yourself, if you've just eaten, this isn't a lovely breath to do, so save it for a time you haven't eaten. We have one more minute. I can begin to feel sweat. In this final moment of doing it, how can you continue? It's like always relaxing, releasing, moving what you need to. Continue this one, let it be the final pumping for you, as and when you come back to natural breathing. Natural breathing in your own time, you can close your eyes. If there's any movement, allow it, otherwise, another opportunity just to feel, so breath is hugely impactful. Science is really just catching up with what is possible. Some of the work we're doing today is very much about, so your nervous system, it, we talk of fight and flight and rest and digest, if you've heard of them, but there's kind of more to it than that. It's like operating systems, and they all can operate together at the same time, so our like, go, 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 get them, can be operating at the same time as our, but I need to digest my food, and it causes so much chaos, things like acid reflux, and the sort of evidence showing that our systems just aren't sort of in balance, and one's like, and the other one's like, and they're all sort of going like this. So, we want to, and breath is very powerful, because we can, without... Keeping awareness of it, we can move, we can transition from one system to the next. So, the beginning exercises were like, getting us into the bit that energizes more of the sympathetic nervous system, and now we're going to dive into the parasympathetic, a sort of up and then a down. And if you kind of come down, if you're one of those people that does a lot of meditation, but you're kind of a bit of a stress head as you do it, then you'll notice that kind of like, oh, how much more time have I got? This is a bit boring. It's because that other system's like worrying, there's nothing wrong with you, you've just got a tank in your garden, kind of pointing its gun at you while you're trying to meditate. So, you want to sort of, if that's you, these sorts of exercises are really great because they, they take the system, put it into that, yeah, get out there with the tank and ride it, and then, and it's like, I've had enough now, and then you can step off the tank, and then you can meditate. So, that's very much what this is about. So, the next exercise is, so if you do something like yoga, I call this sort of pulse breathing, but in yoga it would be called veloma breathing, so it's a, an inhale pause, pause, and you just keep going, and you're just pulsing the breath as much as you can. For some, it would be like two or three breaths, for others, it would be like 15, 16 pulses. And then after you've held the breath in as much as you can, a gentle squeeze of everything, and then release. We're going to lie down for this one. So, I'm going to lie down to begin with, then I'm going to sit up, so don't worry about me doing that. The most important thing is to get comfortable. So, you might want a pillow, particularly if your head carriage is a little bit sort of forwards, then a pillow is great, just allows the shoulders and the chest to drop down. So... Lie yourself down. Let your arms rest, just somewhere on the floor that feels comfortable. So, we haven't started the veloma, these first few moments of lying down, it's like there's still a load of tension. So, shuffle, letting the upper body move in one direction, a little off-screen. Letting the lower body go the other direction. Yeah, deep breaths in, even let out a sigh, even if there are people who are around you. They're just watching, invite them to join you on the floor, lie down on the sofa. Okay, veloma. So, you don't need to, you don't need to have to have your hands down, but it's helpful, particularly if you're a chest breather. And it's just inhale, pause without letting any air out. Remember, you get to the peak of that inhale, then a gentle squeeze, just a gentle one, so I'm not like, oh, just like, ooh, can I just make every part of me if I imagine myself like a shell, harden it on a breath hold? And then exhale. Moving. Suddenly, my neck's like, wow, holding tension. Repeat. At the top of that inhale, pause, squeeze, and you're just squeezing as long as you can. It's not a stress thing, it's like a loving hug, wrapping around every part of your skin. You find your own timing. As you get to that peak, squeeze, finding your own timing. If you can keep holding your breath and squeezing that whole body, hugging hug, then do so, otherwise, as and when you return to natural breathing. Allow the body to find its most comfortable position, so for you, that might be... So for you, that might be lying on your back, it might be lying on your side, even lying on your front. But as you find that position, move, stretch a little, it's like, noticing as we do breath, as we slow ourselves down, we can invite ourselves present. And it means being present with all that is not great within us. But also recognizing there is more than that. There is, as I like to talk about, the and. Whatever I notice, even if my mind is disappearing, wandering off, planning my shop at the local supermarket is like, and, and what else? So as we do this breathing, I've set myself up, but you can stay. So thank you for joining me. I look forward to connecting with you again. That's all we have time for today. So as the music goes off, invite you just to stay there, breathing, looking after yourself. So I'm Oliver James. Hopefully Fidwell will have me on again. I'd love to do a live session with you all. So have a lovely rest of your day.